Thirty-one, and we've got a lot on this workshop. Would you like to thank you everybody for being here? I'm gonna go ahead and call this to order. Do we have any public comments? Hold on. I don't know this guy.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Joyner. I live at sixteen oh four Mulberry Acres Drive here in Bryant. And I wanted to share an idea for you about, I know you're gonna be discussing water, wastewater rates. I have some experience there with the city. And I reviewed some of the information from the twenty-one dash seven ordinance where you amended twenty-one rates, went back through twenty-two, twenty-three. And in advance, of course, you're always forecasting out in front. And the rates are designed to, number one, pay debt service on outstanding bonds secured by water and sewer revenues, AKA system bonds. And then in 2023, an infrastructure fee is put in place to be used solely for the repayment of sewer or water system bonds and loans. So it looks like we had money set aside in the rate for bonds, and then we put in another rate for bonds. Now, there was also some things, I know, with infrastructure in terms of meters and things, so I had an unawareness of that, and I thought, okay, well, that makes sense. But one of the things in the 2023 ordinance, and I'll try to be quick here, but I want to explain a thought process, is in the 2023 ordinance, it references the two thousand six ordinance that was originally given. Four and a half million dollars for the Series nineteen ninety-eight bonds, and it says, whereas the Series nineteen ninety-eight bonds have since been paid off. And there's a theme there. We borrowed some money, or we put a fee in place to pay off a debt, and we paid the debt off, and the charge goes away. What I read in the 2023 ordinance is the city council wants to use this fee to fund current and future bond and loan repayments relating to the water distribution system, treatment plant, sanitary sewer. No specific bond program, no specific bond amount, which lends me to believe this is a rate or a fee that you want to charge now potentially in perpetuity. Reminding me what, if you're familiar with the famous economist Milton Friedman, he said, no program is so permanent as a temporary government program. I believe these rates, and I've worked with them a lot. They were designed to have rate studies that produced rates that are tied to consumption, and those rates will cover our debts and our operations. When you put a fee in there in perpetuity, what it does is it establishes what I consider a false bottom, and so a false rate. And in a time where you're putting together a theme that says, use less, pay less, the way to use, to pay as less as possible is to get rid of fees that are flat fees. So what I would recommend, and I'll close with this, and I'll follow, I live in Ward Two, by the way, so I'm gonna follow up with my Ward Two council members with maybe a more detailed email. I really wanted to speak with you guys last week at the engagement, but, very little to do with it. Sunset. What I really think you should consider is going back to the people that did the rate study, and this should not be a big problem because you're talking about a fixed monthly fee that should be pretty set. I figure about ten thousand meters now from when I worked here, fifteen dollars, that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars a month, you're gonna take it down to a hundred, or ten dollars. So you would be able to fix that and say, what would our rates look like if we took the non-rated revenue that's coming from this infrastructure fee and put it into our rates for water and wastewater, like traditionally we've had? Because I think when the people put it in two thousand six, that's what they intended for it to be, a temporary fee to pay off a debt, and then we go back to our historical model, which is water rates, wastewater rates. Look at that, come up with what you think would be a break-even usage. Because now, with the infrastructure fee, your set cost goes up by fifteen dollars. I know you're gonna reduce it to ten, but what do your rates look like if you reduce it all the way to zero? And all those people, I'll bet you, that use three to four thousand gallons or less, they're gonna be better off. And you can have that discussion, not just, hey, why would we have to have these greater fees, but here are some options that we look at. When I work with my clients, I work with a commodity, I work with diesel fuelers as a consultant, I work with trucking companies, and I like options. Because you can discuss benefits, cons, and ultimately come up with not cheapest price, but greatest value. And if you can do that, I think you'll have a good, a better maybe, public response than just saying, this is the way it has to be because we've got costs, and now you gotta get revenues. Okay? Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Bob. Any other public comments? All right, so first, we've got planning development. We wanted to have some discussions, see if you had any questions about our comprehensive growth plan contract. This is on the agenda of the meeting, but I wanted to make sure we have plenty of opportunity for you to ask questions. Again, this was recommended by Planning Commission. You approved them as a client or as a contractor, and now...
We've also had them present as a result of the RFQ. Both Judith Kelso and Dave Roberts are here to answer any particular questions in regards to the scope of work. As you looked at the scope of work, it's laid out, initial phase is an investigation phase, is getting all the information pertaining to the city, pre-existing master plans, water, wastewater master plans, street plans, parks plans. And then it's also start establishing like steering committees, where we pull groups together, they interview stakeholders. And then the second phase is more or less the engagement of the groups that will have what they call charats, where we assemble a big group to talk about, you know, what's this, what direction the city's gonna go? Because, I mean, I think the biggest part of this is that we're really trying to find out what our citizens truly want. And so I think there's a lot of value in this. And then, of course, the third phase will be to assemble that information and get it back to us. There's a fourth phase in there, but it's not included as of yet, and that's a result of what that information's gonna do for like defining zoning and land use and those things like that. But that's, I mean, we're looking at a sixteen, eighteen-month process here, so we'd like to get started on it as soon as possible. But that being said, if y'all have any questions, I'm sure we can come up with some answers.
I do have a question. Nobody else does? So I was really excited, the presentation you guys made, and what you did for Soschi was amazing. So that was, what, twenty twenty-three, when it finished up? So the price tag for Soschi was four-ten. So this, our rate is considerably more. So what's the difference? Or is this, is this the first rate we were given, or did we modify it? And if so, had we modified?
So, yeah, thank you very much for that question. I'm impressed that you pulled those numbers. I had pulled the same numbers, and I was at, I think, about four fifteen for the three Those were not, those did not address land use. So we had one plan that was a infrastructure plan, that was streets and drainage. We had one plan that was active transportation and trails. And then we have a third plan that's parks and recreation. And so they were three master plans that all worked in concert together, but it was not, it was not a land use plan considering land use and zoning. This also has a robust market assessment, so housing, land use, kind of productivity per acre type stuff. And so we've got some analysts on the team that will really be gathering a lot of information on that during the assessment phase. And so there's a lot of in-depth assessments that happen in that Phase One.
So do our, our master plans integrate with what you're doing, or do they not work?
Or... So the master plans are gonna be where we start and pull it together, and we're going to look at the various master plans and how they relate to each other, and how they're gonna relate to your future growth, and we're gonna look for any places that your master plans may have, you know, may not work together in concert as, you know, like if there's conflicts between the plans. And then there will be recommendations based on the future growth of the community and the direction that the community wants to grow. We'll have, we'll go back and look at those other plans and see if there's places that you may wanna have some tweaks to bring everything into compliance with your comprehensive plan.
Money big price tag.
The, the part that you were referencing, the, about zoning and such, wouldn't that be Phase Five that's not listed as a part of the price?
It's Phase Four.
Phase Four, okay.
Yeah. So there's three phases, and everything, all the assessments that happen pre-charret, and then the second phase is getting everything ready to go and some preliminary information on some possible growth scenarios for that charret. And then that charret process is really testing those theories in real time. So as we're getting community input, we're generating solutions, and then we're showing those live in real time and testing those. And then that third phase is after the charret, getting that documented, formalized, developed out, getting the detail put behind it, and then, and then documenting and coming back. This team also did work in Pine Bluff, we're working together in northwest Arkansas. The Pine Bluff fee was in twenty nineteen, and it was, it exceeded five hundred. And then we had another one in twenty seventeen that was five hundred. So it's, it's in line with some of these other projects. We've got, there's, it's a team of four consultants, so there's us, DPZ is the national consultant that we will, that you'll see the most of with us in partnership, and then we have two different analysts, land use strategies and urban three. They do different types of market analysis and assessments.
Questions? Any other questions?
How many updates will we have going forward? This is gonna take up to eighteen months. What can we look forward to as updates?
Specifically with the council?
Yes.
We can, I mean, we're just down the street, so if y'all need an update, we can be here to provide updates. We will have a formal steering committee that will meet regularly throughout the process, but then we can also, and that steering committee will hopefully have a representative from council and a representative from Planning Commission, as well as, you know, other folks that'll make up that committee. But yeah, we're certainly happy to provide updates.
All right, thank you. Move along here, we're gonna leave the time out. What about, we've got some legislative changes that we need to talk about. Just wanted to, again, this information, wanted you to know, this is what came into effect August fifth.
So in your packet, some of these are reflecting recent legislative changes. In the back of it, you can see the bills that these reflect. We're really just kinda cleaning up our code of ordinances to match what's, what's been passed. One of them was kind of basic, it was in regards to vegetated gardens, and so we were just kinda more or less changing our terminology to allow folks to be able to have gardens. I think ours currently says something like two acres or less, but they have removed that restriction, so that, in regards to that, that was just a basic cleanup. I think the more interesting one is the, the, what do we call the, the accessory dwelling units, the ADUs. And what that did is gave people the ability to build a, essentially a second structure on their property. It can either be attached, detached, or even internal to the original structure. And, you know, and previously, I think folks kinda considered those like mother-in-law quarters along those lines, but it's removed some of the restrictions associated with that. And so we more or less adapted that code. I mean, I can go through each one of these if you guys wanna look at them. I mean, previously, they were conditional use, and so no longer, they'll be permitted within all residential areas.
And Ted, Colton and Ted have done a great job on this, and I failed to actually get it on your, uh, Tachia agenda, so I did handout, everybody should have the handout now. I did hand that out this afternoon.
I, I think the plan is, is that even on, it's in the agenda, this is just more or less a discussion of it, because it'll go to the Planning Commission and then come back to you guys for approval. So there's a step or two in between. So this is really just mostly a review of it. Does it catch any errors or along that lines?
Yeah, we wanted you to see it before it goes to Planning Commission, if there's any feedback or changes in the solar array.
Yeah, we'll talk about that in a minute. Some of the stuff that's in here is basically the, the maximum or minimum size, it can be only seventy-five percent of the primary structure, or a thousand square feet, whichever is left. But it is kinda interesting that it does say that it can be detached, attached, or internal. So in a way, you can have that within your structure. I'm not quite sure how that works out, but, and it also doesn't have to be an associated family member. They don't have to have any other ties, so it could even be another property rental along that lines. They do, do not limit how we manage that as, in the case if we wanna do it for daytime rentals. We can still have those codes in place as a result of those.
Sounds like that property owner that had a dwelling already on their property, they're gonna put an apartment upstairs for Dad.
Yeah.
He still get a building permit, but he doesn't get conditional use or anything?
You don't have to do conditional use, but you still have to apply for all the normal building permits.
And permits, yeah, okay.
They, they did lighten up some of the restrictions on how you connect to existing infrastructure, but there was enough forethought into it that says you gotta get those utilities to commit to be able to do that, those, those things. So it does kinda change things a little bit. I think, in a way, like I said, it frees some folks up, especially since we kinda, you know, regardless that it's not really tied towards family members, it does free things up for folks having extended family that live on their property. So once again, not asking for anything out of that, and just quick review, and if you've got questions, we can talk about it, but it'll go to Planning Commission, we'll bring it back to you.
All right. I also have a couple updates on Act five oh five, which kinda clears up some gray areas as it pertains to council members. They, in Act five oh five, this change happened, took effect in August, August fifth. It more explicitly defines deliberation, and it is two or more council members that are exchanging opinions about something that they could foreseeably have to come, that issue that foreseeably could become before you, that you would have to vote on. So there was kind of a gray area in the last law, whether it was more than two, or if it pertained to two, but now it is two. So that kinda eliminates any kind of informal conversations that you might have. It closes those loopholes, make sure there's no emails just between two people, no small meetings just between two people. So there's no deliberations outside of public meetings. These could really potentially trigger the FOIA obligation of public meetings. The next is about remote attendance. There was kind of a gray area for council members to attend meetings remotely. We can no longer do remote attendance unless the governor declares an emergency. The notice and agenda postings, we have been doing everything that they have cleared up for us, but it is more the three-day notice requirement. You can still add things after the agenda is published. Things can still be added, we just need to, again, make sure that the public is aware and we have to notify media of any special meetings, that's all being done. Has to be posted on our social media, if we have social media, we have already been posting. The recording and retention, we record audio and video of all, all of our public meetings, that is a new requirement. Executive sessions, it used to just be for personnel matters, litigation, that kind of thing. They did add cyber security breaches. So you can now go into executive session for cyber security breaches. And courts can now nullify city council actions if they were done outside of a public meeting, if they were done in violation of any type of open meeting. So it clears up more things. This allows for more transparency, stricter boundaries, must be in person to vote in city council meetings. And then there's higher stakes because a court can now disqualify any kind of decision-making if they deem it was made outside of a public meeting. I did give y'all a handout, I know I went kinda fast, but you did have a handout of what the old law was, what the new law is, and then kinda how that applies to you now. Is there any questions on those?
All right. Okay, again, let go, let that, with those stuff, you're gonna play the commission and come back. We also have the Tarvers.
We have one of them, so.
Well, I don't know, is it okay if we just, y'all just look at the solar panel and...
Once again, yeah.
We're running out of time. Is that okay that we just give the solar panel for info only and discuss it another time? Okay, thank you. So a very unique situation with the Tarvers and their property, they're wanting to build their home on their property, and we've kinda had a, within our floodplain ordinance, some questions about, can they do that based on the, the ability for emergency services? DRC, as we kinda talked about this, and Ashley said, hey, look, this is ultimately gonna, needs to come to council, and it was all, it was last minute, and so instead of having it on the agenda alone, I wanted to put it in, put it here on this workshop so you, we, y'all could get caught up to speed. Is that fair, Ashley?
Yes. And I kinda sent an email earlier this week about what the issues are. I believe the Tarvers are here to make their case for you, but the floodplain manager is also here. If you wanna hear from him, he can tell you the exact reasons that this was denied, this permit was denied. It's my understanding, though, from page ten, Article two, F and G, is the reason that it was being denied, mostly for accessibility issues and cost issues. Council is the appeal board, so if the Tarvers give you an error that they believe was made by the floodplain manager, then council can hear the appeal. And it is my understanding, I have been having emails with Dr. Tarver, and in those emails, he has given an error that he believes took place, and I let him discuss that more with you, what he believes that error is. So if the council believes that an error was made in the decision-making process, you can then hear the appeal. In order to grant a variance, in Section F, it gives, let's see, A through H, of the reasons you can grant the variance, all of these have to be met in order for you to grant the variance. And Dr. Tarver probably has, you know, his reasons for all of those being met. And if you agree with that and grant the variance, what I would ask is that, and waiver of liability, that the Tarvers would be required to sign a waiver of liability. I've talked to Dr. Tarver about this, he is agreeable to that. He has actually sent me a drafted liability waiver that I've looked at and agreed with if it gets to that point. But this time, I'll just let Dr. Tarver or Ms. Tarver, whoever wants to come and talk.
Eric?
Oh, or Eric, I'm sorry.
Eric Richardson, Richardson Engineers, representing the Tarvers, Mr. Mr. Tarver on this. And also, we've been working closely with city staff, Vernon Williams. Vernon, if you wanna help set this up too, glad, glad to let you do that. So you wanna speak to this first on what you found, or you want me to kinda just add it in?
You go ahead.
Okay. So do you all have a copy, or I guess maybe you were emailed the floodplain ordinance, kinda look through what we're up against? Okay, so basically, we're looking at, the Tarvers have, it's twenty-eight acres they bought on Midland Road. It's two-one-two-oh-six Midland Road, and they're trying to carve out about a four-acre tract to build their personal house on. And so they need the floodplain development permit. There are some stipulations that have to be met, the staff, city staff, and your floodplain manager have been very good to meet with us. Mayor's been very good to meet with us and try to work through these issues. There are two, it sounds like, that we're hung up on, and that, or that Vernon is not quite sure that he can issue this, this permit due to, it's not real clear whether these are being met or not. And if we can kinda look at those two items, if I'm not mistaken, it's Article two, paragraph four and F, it's the proposed development's accessibility by ordinary and emergency vehicles during flooding events. And then G, the anticipated cost of providing governmental services to the proposed development during and after flood events, including maintenance and repair of streets, bridges, facilities, public utilities such as sewer gas, electrical water systems. That one's a little far-reaching. The first part of it sounds like it could be equipment, if there was a fire truck, for example, involved in a rescue. And then it goes on to talk about structures and infrastructure, so I'm not real sure about that. But just like to point out that this is not a development, it is a little bit unique. So it's a residential structure, residential house. The Tarvers have offered, they're gonna fill up, of course, the property out of the floodplain, house will be three feet out of the floodplain, as the code states it should be. The issue here is, what about Midland Road? Where the water tops over Midland Road, do they have adequate access to their property in a flooding event? In the event that there was an emergency and there was a flood at the same time, could an emergency vehicle get to them? And I think that's kinda where we're stuck, and would we cause any damage to that vehicle or other infrastructure? And so that's what we're asking for a variance from, and I believe the stipulation for a variance is you have to prove a hardship. And so the hardship would be on the Tarvers in this case, what do they do with this property now? So what do they do with it? I don't, I, I believe they, they were, well, they understood the property to be able to be developed whenever they bought it. And so it wasn't property that they knew that there was a risk with whenever they got involved with, with the purchase, or whenever they purchased the property. So that's, that's a huge hardship. And how do we proceed from here? So it's, it's really the city's infrastructure, it's the city street that's not, not out of the floodplain, not the property. We can raise the property up, but we can't afford to raise that street up. That could be a million-dollar project. That could be a million-dollar project or something like that. So like I say, just petitioning the council for a variance from the ordinance based on those reasons. It's access to the site. We do feel like the, of course, the property and the road are in the floodplain, but can't we within reason access that site? Can a fire truck get to that site? Looking at it, it looks like there could be some water over the road. Chief, what, you've probably seen that before. But how much water and is it really inaccessible to emergency vehicles? And would we cause, cause damage to those vehicles? Those are the questions that we're asking and reasons we're asking for the variance. We're here to answer questions. Tarbers are here.
I've got one question. Chief, what are we doing in a case like that?
It's a case like that, we're trying to, if the fire engine can't reach it, if the water gets too deep, we're trying to win by boat.
Trying to what, say?
If it's a fire, which is whatever distance we can get to, we're trying to fight it from that.
Okay.
Go in by the boat.
Okay. Thank you.
What you have done recently. And you have done that recently, unfortunately.
How many places are that around the city are like that?
I can name three that are really problematic.
Would you mind naming them?
We've actually had a fatality in that area.
Are there other properties on Midland that you cannot access that fall under this that?
Not residential. Most of it's usually like that. Cars getting stuck in the crossflow there at the soccer field and stuff, so much of that.
So I looked at the map, it looks like the flood area is rather large, it covers other areas, so I would think that other houses have a similar issue too.
We've actually had that together, issues of residence or any kind of structure goes the other way in the soccer fields.
When's the last time we've had enough rain to jeopardize like Midland and accessibility issues?
It's probably been a couple of years from here. Now, this year, back earlier in the year, we did have some issues around Bishop Park, some of those.
Troy mentioned a couple earlier in the year. But the only property development on that property being the home alone?
Yes, sir.
No, no future development of anything that would have any kind of, like a rental for a existence?
That's correct, as far as I, as far as I know.
You had a separate facility there, it looked like had an apartment over it or something on your garage?
There's like another garage, it's connected through a bridge.
Okay.
But it's closer to the driveway.
The drive itself, is it going to be raised to be on the?
At least as high as the road.
Yeah, they'll have to get a certificate, won't they?
Yes, sir.
Have we ever had an occasion where we couldn't get down, up or down Midland?
Yes.
I'd say so, yes, sir.
So basically, Midland, you have to come back around the other direction, right?
Probably, no, Station 3, you have to come back from that direction. That's usually what causes our problem, people trying to cross through that area when it is flooded and everything. And the vehicle gets swept away, we don't have a stream.
Keep in mind, I know we don't have a map up right now, but their driveway, proposed drive is at the far north end of this property, which is the furthest away from that crossing that we could, we could get. So it's, it's almost, well, it's on the high end of the floodplain.
Any other information? You feel like you have enough information for when this comes up on the agenda? Is there questions for Ashley?
I was going to ask Ashley if she could speak to the waiver that they're going to sign?
Yes, the waiver would be that they would waive any liability on the city if it, what there was flooding and the city was not able to get to their home for any kind of emergency. They are releasing the city from any liability. This waiver of liability also would run with the land. So if the Tarbers decided to sell their home, this would have to be disclosed. And then any kind of closing, the new landowners would have to also sign.
Will it also restrict to just that home itself and no future development of anything else?
It is on the land, so it's tied to the land, not necessarily just the structure.
Okay. So the next person that comes along, even though they're signing that, could possibly have the possibility. Option of building something else to it, or?
Would they have to come back through this?
I mean, it'd have to come back through.
I would also like to point out that this is part of a replat, so this is, the first answer out of the gate is if they continue, because they still have to go to replat, they have to go back to planning commission and things like that for this structure, so.
Take their insurance and floodplain certificate and exemption, yeah.
So without this decision, we can't do anything. That's why we wanted to bring it to you. Anything else?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This might be a ridiculous question, but Ted, this may go to you too, but on the long-term plan, is Bryant's long-term plan not to fix Midland in some way, shape or form?
It is on our master transportation plan. A little bit of history there is, you know, Highway 5 widening is actually going to put a signal light there and going to widen it, so there's going to be some improvement on that end, but it won't necessarily get this. But as part of our master transportation plan, it is a minor arterial, which requires us to at least get one lane passable in flood conditions.
That's going to be.
Very expensive.
Very expensive and.
And a long time away.
Well, that's quite an elevation raise.
All right, any other? Hey, thank, I just want to commend everybody for working together to come up with solutions. A lot of people work really hard.
I have one more question. I just thought of. Do we know what the elevation is below the floodplain at the point where the driveway will be?
It's about a foot. Yeah, you have to model it a little bit, because, I mean, I know Eric has used his surveyors to shoot it, as well as determining what the base flood elevation is at that location. It's probably somewhere between a foot to two feet from where it is. At Midland.
Is there, is there anything that the Tarbers could do as far as like where the house sits or something like that, that would help alleviate any of this? Like if anybody's like completely against this, is there anything they could do with that? It might be engineering question or a Ted question, like the location of the house on that parcel?
I don't think so. It's an issue of probably the water getting underneath, I mean, probably needs larger structures underneath than the road, I'm assuming.
Well, I was thinking that the chief was saying that to get back on the boat, right? So like, I didn't know if like it was closer to Midland, and they may not want to do this, I'm just throwing options. If it was closer to Midland, maybe the reach would be. If the drive's elevated, then essentially you're talking about the distance between where the water starts on Midland to their drive, correct? Is that, am I understanding?
They could be required to raise the driveway the whole way out. And so keep that out of the floodplain between Midland and the house, that would, that would help, certainly.
So I was going to list on, your code requires that if there's a better place to put the house, and when they've cited that, that they're required to do that. I personally don't think that makes a difference where they put the house on the property. The entire property's in the floodplain, so it's not like there's a place that's high and dry or something like that. If there was a location like that, your code would have required us to have them move the house to that location.
Just for the record, you are a floodplain administrator, aren't you?
Yes, yeah, I'm Vernon Williams with Garnet Engineering. I'm your contract floodplain administrator.
Does this in any way compromise or worsen the effect of the flooding? I mean, by building the driveway and the house and?
So, you know, a lot of the decisions being made tonight are more of a political nature and that sort of stuff. I'm basically here to, as a technical advisor on this, and I can tell you from a technical standpoint, that the way the floodplain is modeled, that the development they do will have no impact, or essentially no impact, on, on those that surround them. The modeling anticipates projects like this being built. And, you know, so I would say no, it's not going to have any impact.
So to be clear, it's just the main issue is accessibility is kind of in it, and the waiver could help solve that.
I just want to be clear, no matter what, if they have an emergency room or whatever they can.
Yeah, we know that, you're awesome, so.
Yeah.
But the concern is still there that everybody puts, puts others in danger.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
To do, so.
They need a good boat to get out of there themselves, basically.
All right, anything? Good, feel like you're up to speed? Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, thank you.
Hang around. All right, now, we've got some more time for.
Are we sure we don't have to talk about selling Tim?
No. Oh.
I'd like to. Tim always has to go last.
I know.
Tim, yeah, go, Tim.
No, I guess we'll go to Mariah's presentation. Like I told Water and Sewer Advisory, Dan Jackson with Willdan Financial Services here. That is the firm that performed the rate study. And then Ryan Bowman with Roddy Eltrich and Clark. And you see, he's sitting right there, and he's on council report. So, with that, Mariah.
Yeah, so I thought to begin, I don't know how many of you are able to go to any of the town halls or other meetings. Mariah's put together a really great presentation. I asked her to go ahead and do that again, and if you feel free to stop her, you've seen this before, and ask questions you weren't able to ask before. Go ahead, Mariah.
Okay. As you guys all know, water and wastewater are, of course, some of the most essential services in our community. But as the years go on, they're also the most highly regulated and complex. So we have worked over the past couple of years really hard to comply with Arkansas Act 605 requirements that we're going to be seeing, evaluating our infrastructure needs, updating our master plans, and kind of working with the community to see what we can do to make rates more affordable. A quick rundown on Act 605. Act 605 was passed in 2021, and drastic changes to the water systems across the state were the result. Act 605 takes the responsibility of passing rates pretty much off of the governing body and kind of puts it on the state itself. Instead of council being able to pass whatever rates they feel were justified, it has to be a certain amount that brings in the revenue, which means training of the governing bodies, mandated rate studies by an approved third party every five years. And then the big one is the implementation of full cost pricing to cover the capital and operation and maintenance for the water system. So that means all of our debt has to be covered, all of our operation and maintenance costs have to be covered, depreciation, all of that kind of stuff. Our first step to comply with this law was to update our systems' master plans. We hadn't updated them since 2008, so they were definitely in for a redo. And I want to be clear that while this law does not require the water system to have recently adopted master plans, it does require the cost of rates that currently reflect future and current needs of the system. So it's really important that we had all of our needs laid out and adopted and agreed on for the next five years, so that rate analysts could take into account those capital projects. On the next page, I'll show you our capital projects. If we didn't, like I said, if we didn't have capital improvement plans adopted, we'd be basing rates off out-of-date needs. The compliance with the deadline for Act 605 is July 1st of 2026, which means that we have to have those rates adopted and put into place, and Natural Resources Division has had to have seen and signed off on our rate study. As you can see, the capital approval plans that have been recently adopted take about $61.8 million into account. Water takes up 23% of those projects, and wastewater takes up about 77% of those projects. I know they're kind of hard to see there, but that you should have had copies of these already in your master plans that we brought to you to adopt. You can see the projects there. Hint the near term, go to 2030, so that's the next five years of projects. Depending on the type of capital project that we're pursuing, we're going to analyze different funding mechanisms through a mix of rates or low interest rate loans, private bonds, potential sales tax, sales tax dedicated to certain improvements, and impact fees. And I do want to mention, as you guys may remember, we're also undergoing a impact fee study right now to update those fees. Impact fees are basically one-time fees passed on to new developments for the capacity that is required of the system. They're supposed to accurately reflect growth within the systems and exist to ensure new customers are pulling their fair share across for growth. They have not been updated since 1996 for wastewater and 2006 for water, so you can imagine how much growth we have seen since then in the city.
You have a timeline on that, of when you might bring that forward?
Couple of months, hopefully. Yeah, yeah, a couple of months.
All right, thank you.
Yep. We were originally going to do impact fees and rates in the same study, however, impact fees have a lot more wiggle room and a lot more decision on your guys' part, on what you guys want to adopt. We just kind of get a range of minimum and maximum, what's recommended, and then we do a lot of work from there. So there will be a lot of involvement with developers and the community and you guys as well.
Workshop.
Yeah. Rate analysts did account for predicted amount of revenue we may see over the years with the collection of impact fees. These are the actual water and wastewater rates that we are proposing. As you can see, over the next five years, water rates increase by 9% each year, and then wastewater increases by 6% for the first three years, and then 2% for the following two years after that.
So Mariah, correct me if I'm wrong, but the majority of the expense is in the wastewater, but the minority of it is, of the rate is in the wastewater?
Yes, yes, and I will cover that in just a second. Yeah, I'll get to that, because, yeah, it doesn't always make sense. But, and then I want you guys to note, the infrastructure fee is being proposed to go from $15.75 to $10 for 5 base metered customers, which means over 70% of our water users in Bryant are on 5" inch meters and use less than 5,000 gallons a month. So this rate study does propose the opportunity for customers to conserve water and see a monthly savings of about $3.20 on their monthly bill. Of course, we all know that water is our most valuable resource, so we're kind of a little bit ahead on the curve, trying to get ahead of the conservation initiative and making sure we're being responsible with our water usage. So to answer that, you may, like I said, you might be wondering, our water's going up 9% over the next five years, but our rate or our capital improvement plan, it only takes up 23% of the cost. So this is, oh, that was just showing the $3.20, that's the whole combined. As you guys know, we currently rely 100% on central Arkansas water. As wholesale customers, we were passed down their predicted 10-year cost increase, as well as their new infrastructure fee that they implemented. Over the next 10 years, we're going to see a 5.9% increase in their rates and a 22.8% increase in their infrastructure fee, which the total cost of that increase is about 8.8% that Bryant's going to see. So really, we're only spending, you know, about $23 million, but 8.8% of that is being passed down, and we're increasing rates by 9%. It's important to note that, you know, our relationship with CAW is extremely important, and we only buy our water from them. So the second that it passes through the pipes into Bryant, it's our responsibility. So it's our responsibility to repair and maintain that infrastructure, it's our responsibility to upgrade that infrastructure, it's our responsibility to make sure that we're meeting state and federal guidelines, make sure that the water is still properly disinfected from the pipe to the tap. So it's really important that we are continuing that our rates need to not only reflect us being able to continue buying that safe drinking water, but us being able to continue distributing it as well at the same quality that we receive it as. This is the comparison sheet. I cannot express enough, that comparison when it comes to rates is not a viable way of determining a system's health. Every system is different from different customer bases, different topography across systems requiring different pressure requirements, different growth patterns, different governing bodies, all, all the different things. No system's the same, should never be judged the same. However, Act 605 did kind of level the playing field, if you will, when it comes to rates. It mandates the full coverage pricing, which means that a lot of cities in Arkansas have had to make drastic changes to their rate structures. I included this slide simply so that you guys can see that cities all across Arkansas are feeling the growing pains when complying with 605. But here in Bryant, we really have been able to develop a unique approach that we're able to propose a net savings to minimum customers with that 5 base meter. And as of today, there is no other city in the state of Arkansas that has been able to propose a net savings for any of their customer bases.
Do you actually have any, excuse me, any comparisons to cities that are actually our size?
Centerton is our size. I don't have theirs on here, but they are higher than ours. They did theirs a couple of years ago. Benton does not. We don't ever compare to Benton because they are with the electric, they are subsidized by their electric department, so they don't have to comply with Act 605. We tried, I did a lot of like the Conway and Rogers, mostly because they're similar to us in the way that they're passing their infrastructure funding, so they have 70 to us in the way that they're passing their infrastructure funding, so they have $75 million in the next five years to spend, and Rogers has $100 million to spend in the next five years. So, you know, we're investing that 61.8 million, but our customer bases are pretty different, and they're having to increase their bills by 7% and 3.5.
Thank you.
As you can see, the community benefits here, we want you guys to know these rates are not just numbers on a bill. They represent reliable fire protection, safe drinking water, and a strong foundation for economic growth in the city. We hope that you guys can feel a sense of pride for the way that we've tried to structure these proposed rates. We know that when you guys are paying your bill, you're investing in the safety and sustainability we expect in our city, you're investing in your children's future, and you're investing in the quality of life that we all continue to enjoy here in Bryant. Everyone wins when we can put aside the negatives of the situation and focus on the positives that come as a result of our practices today and in the future. If one thing I hope that you guys take away from this, it's that we live in a community where we don't question if the water will come out of the tap when we turn it on. That is a privilege that not a lot of, that a lot of communities are facing to not have, and it's a responsibility that we take very seriously. Any questions?
How long before the regional water comes as an option?
Yeah, regional water's predicted for delivery in 2030, which means none of our, we did that on purpose, none of our capital improvement plans include any improvements that we'll have to do. We'll reevaluate that when it gets closer, so we're not spending money on something.
Thank you.
Yep.
But we haven't evaluated any costs of what it's going to be to get the water, what the water costs to be?
Yeah. In our capital improvement plan, in the master plan, it's in the midterm improvement section. So, I don't, I don't have it on me, but it is in the midterm improvement section, I can send it to you.
Talking about Selen Regional or?
Selen Regional.
Yeah, yeah, Selen Regional. And each project is listed out in our water master plan, the capital improvement plan. It'll say SRPWA next to it, and that's an improvement that we have to do to be able to get water from central Arkansas, or Selen Regional.
Is there a way to evaluate what the cost to be?
I don't think they're close enough to knowing yet.
No, we'll have to redo, because, I mean, we have to do the rate study every five years, and then the capital improvement plan will obviously reevaluate when we're doing that rate study. But when Selen Regional gets closer to being able to pull water, we'll have a better idea of how much it's going to cost. With the cost kind of floating around with a minimum and max of what, you know, we have in the budget, it's, there's no solid numbers on what water will be from Selen Regional.
And I don't expect water would go down on Selen Regional, but I think we'll have a stability of rates going forward that we don't have now.
Yes, yeah, we'll hopefully see, I mean, it'll be a little bit different. Like I said, you won't see CAW's infrastructure fee, you won't see their watershed protection fee, you won't see the wholesale cost from it. Like I said, it'll be a little bit more expensive to begin with, but the pros definitely outweigh the cons, the way that it's looking now, and we will eventually.
I have a seat on that board.
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. So, we started our rate study really kind of under our ordinance that establishes three years. So, if we pass this, does this satisfy Act 605? We're not going to have to do anything?
Yeah, we changed it to five years, right? Yeah. So, we changed, the original ordinance right now with the rates is every three years, but we changed this one to say five years, so that we could stay in line with Act 605. So, that's why it's taken five years to do a count instead of three.
So, as you know, I've looked at this cake and the ingredients that make the cake. So, loved your presentation, Mr. Jackson, did a great job when you presented. I must have shrug off. So, part of the, I'm just looking at cost, and part of what was proposed then were 10 new employees over five years. What's that cost in this cake?
You'll come up and explain, Dan?
Yeah, we did a five to 10-year forecast of the cost service, and yes, we did include the addition of additional personnel. I think that has a nominal impact on the rate structure, but the much bigger impact is going to be the CAW costs and the debt service costs. I think the personnel is a fairly, a fairly minor part of the cost.
That's a pretty best of addition, 10 people in five years?
Yeah, it is, but it is, it is part of the long-term planning of a utility to make sure that it is properly staffed in order to run itself properly. And then, of course, you know, there are going to be people leaving in the time, so, you know, the, while the FTEs might go up, they might actually go down a little bit also over the next several years.
Can I add on to that question?
Mariah.
Don't want to interrupt. How is that addition of 10 members of staff aligned with any possible annexations? Because obviously, if we inherit more land, we're going to have to service more. But are they on the same slope? Are they related in your study?
We did not in the study anticipate or account for any significant annexations. I think if there are additional annexations, they're probably, I'm not an operations person, but I would think that you probably might need a couple of extra FTEs, but you'll also get a lot of additional accounts. So, I think it'll offset personally.
In the rate study, they did account for a growth of 1.7% on water accounts every year and a 2% for wastewater, so that'll kind of be figured in there.
That was in the existing service area, so, yeah, as the system grows, you're going to need more people.
Sorry to interrupt. No, you're good. I'd like to give us a break before we start council. This is going to be up tonight for first reading.
So, we can ask more questions, Dan?
Yes, is that okay? Is everybody okay with that, that we take a little break before we are official?
So, you can talk about seller?
No seller.
Okay, let's take a break, and then round back in at 6:30. Thanks, everybody, for joining.